With the student speaker and we saw the beans up. And it was just, it was a very nice event. And I wanted to recognize two organizations reaching out to our students with scholarships and lovely acknowledgements and luncheons and such. And one is CBDX, and that's the younger, the forty and under, younger set for the Central Business District. And they've been growing and become more generous each year with scholarship funds for the Princess Anne students. And another group was, this dates back to March, but the Kemsville Branch Ninety-Nine Fleet Reserve Association, and Dan Kenny is president. And they provided, they had an essay contest with students from Bayside, Green Run, Green Run Collegiate, and Princess Anne. It was a lovely dinner back in March that I was remiss in not mentioning. So, that's what I have.
Thank you. Anyone else?
All right. So, Dr. Spence, we're ready for the next workshop, our first workshop item, real world pathways.
Okay. Well, here's my introduction. You better take advantage of this while you can, because this is Amy's last workshop with us.
Ahhh.
Hey, Amy!
And she's going to talk about the work that her team has been doing around real-world pathways, but I know we all wish her well on her next steps. This is our very last board meeting with Dr. Cashwell.
Not that we're flapping that you're leaving, we're just happy for you.
Well, I am thrilled to have an opportunity to be able to present tonight. And I would like to thank you all for the warm congratulations and heartfelt well wishes over the past few weeks. And also thank you and the Virginia Beach staff and community for twenty-one fantastic years. This is an amazing community, and I wish you all well. So, good or speak, goodbye. And you may recall that the power went out the last time we were supposed to do this presentation. So, it was fortuitous in a way, because it meant I was able to present on my last day here. So, it worked out. But without further ado, since the power outage till now, we get to present for you regarding real-world pathways for our students. So, good evening, Chair Anderson, Vice Chair McDonald, School Board members, and Dr. Spence. The Department of Teaching and Learning will highlight a few of the real-world pathways and experiences we offer our students throughout their K-12 time with us. Through Goal Two, our strategic plan, we lift up this notion of multiple pathways for students, calling for all students to experience personalized learning opportunities to prepare them for their futures, whether it be post-secondary education, employment, or military service. Furthermore, our graduate profile highlights attributes that are critical to ensuring that our graduates are future-ready. Seems to be a little delay here. There we go. You may recall that last year, we shared a presentation with the board on some updates to our academic and career planning process. We shared how we had launched pathways for students and their families to explore a number of relevant fields, laid out the related courses needed to engage in those fields, and had even highlighted areas that were relevant to our region, such as maritime and cybersecurity. We also shared a number of tools and videos that are a part of our ACP site and can be utilized by students and their families. Furthermore, you might recall that we hosted, for the first time this school year, a Navigating the Journey Night in order to better provide our families and our students information as they encounter the many pathways available to them. When we shared our academic and career planning process, we shared a bit about how this process is not just for high school students, but for all students pre-K through twelve, as they move through the phases of awareness, exploration, and eventually readiness. While there are specific academic and career planning activities along the way, which involve taking interest inventories and setting post-secondary career goals, and engaging in course planning, of course, these experiences alone do not ensure that students are future-ready. It's their everyday experiences in the classroom. So, because of that, there is an intentional focus on ensuring that our curricular experiences and opportunities allow students to have frequent and purposeful, authentic experiences, first to become aware, then explore, and then engage in readiness activities that will provide them the real-world experiences and multiple pathways we would want them to aspire to. So, how do we ensure that students have opportunities to meet their academic and career planning goals? Well, one answer can be found within our pre-K through twelve curriculum, which purposefully provides opportunities for students to transition from awareness to exploration to readiness. And I'll now turn the presentation over to Dr. Hughes, who will show how there's an intentional focus on future-ready, even in our pre-K curriculum.
All right. So, as Dr. Cashwell indicated, curriculum includes learning events for students to engage in academic and career planning, or ACP, through the lens of awareness. As students learn and develop, it is important to provide opportunities for them to explore and examine the possibilities for their future. While we are certainly not able to provide an exhaustive list of curricular connections, the following examples will provide the board with an idea of how elementary students are introduced to real-world experiences throughout their school career. Pre-K curriculum is written by embedded learning events that provide experiences for students to develop awareness of careers and jobs in the world around them. The kindergarten curriculum is closely aligned to the pre-K curriculum and includes content integration through language arts and units of study. At the conclusion of the units, students should be able to describe jobs. Students should also be able to identify the workplaces of people and discuss possibilities for future jobs. As students progress through the curriculum, career exploration continues, and students begin to research careers through virtual experiences. In third grade, language arts and content integration provide opportunities through the curriculum for students to research and explore careers. On this screen, you will see aspects from some of our resources, an article for students to read, a snip of a video clip, research questions, and a Safari Live site that students can engage in for research, and careers, such as field scientist. On this slide, you will see the choice board from Defined STEM, a resource which provides students' experiences through integrated performance tasks across subject areas and various careers as they apply content knowledge to field-based experiences. Here is an example of a computer science performance task. As you see, students are thinking like scientists using authentic tools that illustrate the effect increased saltwater has on the fresh ecosystem. Beyond classroom curricular experiences, elementary students explore careers and jobs through field experiences and futures. One such field experience is the fourth-grade Young People Symphony, performed by the Virginia Symphony Orchestra at the Sandler Center, where students are immersed in the world of music and associated careers. Learning from this experience is then tied into the curriculum within their music class throughout the year. New this year was the Downstream Collaborative Field Experience that was created to connect fourth-grade students with field experts to examine how our choices and actions affect our shared watershed. Fourth-grade students at Allentown Elementary partnered with education students, science students, and professors at Virginia Wesleyan University to develop a model that included a year-long, school-based investigation, weekend family investigations, and a culminating off-site field experience with higher-ed students and field experts. The Department of Teaching and Learning worked closely with Virginia Wesleyan University to develop partnership goals as seen on the screen. The goal is to expand the program to all fourth graders in the coming years. You may already be aware that every fifth-grade student has the opportunity to take a trip to NAS Oceana for the Airshow STEM Lab Day. During the visit, students engage in hands-on activities and learn about STEM careers in a real-world setting. What you may not know is that learning does not end after the trip. Fifth-grade content extends the learning into the classroom by providing students the opportunity to make connections through the integration of a STEM Lab Day in the curriculum. Students have opportunities to engage with the Lynn Haven River Now through various field experiences. Shown on the screen is a Lynn Haven River Now project called Growing Wetlands in the Classroom, and is an opportunity that allows teachers and students to grow wetland plants in their classrooms and schoolyards. This partnership with Lynn Haven River Now, as well as a partnership with the Chesapeake Bay Foundation, has been well-established and embedded into several facets of the Division's educational program. Now, Dr. DeFries will continue the presentation by showing how secondary students move from awareness and exploration to readiness for college and careers.
Thank you, Dr. Hughes. So, as students transition from exploring to readiness for college and careers, they also encounter cross-curricular learning events. Regardless of what subject area students are engaged in, they are making cross-curricular connections in authentic ways in order to experience the integrated work of a career professional. For example, the picture on the left side of this slide illustrates a middle-school class in English engaging in real-life problem-solving related to water scarcity as they read the novel A Long Walk to Water. On the right side of this slide, you will see students engaging in an activity as they take on the role of an environmental scientist. And they learn the importance of oysters serving as biological filters of the day, improving overall water quality. Opportunities such as these continue throughout high school. For example, through the participation in a field experience, all oceanography students take on the role of scientists with field experiences. Pictured on this slide are students engaging in work on a Chesapeake Bay Foundation boat. Some of you may remember the trip from the 2017 board retreat to learn about the wildlife in the bay and practice environmental literacy yourselves. Building the capacity of teachers to engage students in authentic, cross-curricular career experiences, such as the ones that we've shared with you, is essential. Teachers must also experience the same authentic work of career professionals, so that they understand how to develop effective learning experiences for students. Many of these professional learning experiences are available to teachers in collaboration with organizations such as the Chesapeake Bay Foundation and the Lynn Haven River Now A few of our Division's high schools have created job shadowing experiences for our students. Pictured here, you'll see students at Princess Anne High School and their career mentors preparing for a day of job shadowing. Princess Anne has partnered with the Central Business District Association for many years, offering this experience to nearly one hundred interested students per year. This year, the Entrepreneurship and Business Academy hosted their first annual Shadow Day for all sophomores in the academy, with an astounding forty-two area businesses and a hundred-and-twenty-five students participating. Check out the hashtag EBA Job Shadow for some great pictures of the event. Beginning in the fall of 2018, the Office of Technical and Career Education, the Office of Student Support Services, Junior Achievement of Greater Hampton Roads, and the Virginia Beach Business Partners will offer division-wide VBCPS Shadow Days for high school students. Each high school and the Renaissance Academy will be able to send students to participate. While you just saw the many cross-curricular career learning opportunities that students throughout our Division high schools have, as students narrow their interests, they may begin to explore more specialized pathways. One example is the Dental Assisting Program that's offered at the Technical and Career Center. Students in this program get hands-on learning by offering dental preventative services to classmates in both the morning and afternoon sessions. This service is provided in partnership with the Virginia Department of Dental Public Health. Two Virginia licensed dentists help provide checkups with dental report cards. This brief video that you're about to see highlights the program.
Hi, my name is Kyla Erizari, and I represent the Dental Assisting Program at the Technical Center. We send paperwork home for the parents to sign, and we assist the dentists. We provide necessary dental care in our dental lab to eligible TCU students. We provide preventive care such as x-rays, cleanups, sealants, fluoride treatments, and fillings when needed. The students get the service they need while we become experienced in chairside assisting.
We also educate our patients on how to care for their teeth properly. And your parents don't have to take time off of work.
Our students are getting ready to enter the workforce. We believe that having a nice smile may make all the difference in your appearance.
So, another specific pathway that's available that allows for a more in-depth experience is the Advanced Entrepreneurship and Innovation Program that is offered at all high schools. In this program, students work with local entrepreneurs to establish a startup business. This experience allows students to utilize skills that they have learned in front of real donors and mentors. On the left side of this slide, students are onsite at a business pitching their idea for startup funds. On the right side, you will see a finished product for which the student entrepreneurs, in this particular case, were awarded a $500 order. They were pins?
Sticker.
Sticker to your product. Another specialized opportunity offered to all high school students is participation in the Beach Street All-Stars. This band is a collection of students who perform at the Virginia Beach Oceanfront. They are a combination of marching band, boogie band, vocal ensemble, and street entertainment developed and trained by Mr. David Hopson, who's the band director at Green Run High School. Participation in this program has helped prepare students for college-level experience, professional music careers, and even as music teachers themselves. Now that you've seen courses and field experiences that are specific to career pathways, I would also like to highlight an additional pathway for students in the form of student internships. This video highlights an example of one internship experience for students, the Division's Dual Enrollment Mechatronics Program and internship opportunity through STEEL.
Ever since I was a kid, I remember my dad had a radio in his workshop, and I took it apart just to see what it looked like on the inside. So, when I hear the words "STEEL apprenticeship," I immediately think that I'm going to go alongside with engineers and people who work there to do just that, build, design, fix, do all these different things that I've been wanting to do and love doing since I was a little
The apprenticeship program has been around since 1984, and it's really developed and morphed into something that's far more technical these days than what it started out. It started out as very much a tool-and-dive program, and it morphed into really a mechatronics program, far more technical, with much higher automation, which is what you'd see out on our Plant Four today.
We have five different apprenticeship programs registered with the state of Virginia.
While I'm with the guys that are in the process engineering, the technicians that are speaking with the engineers in building, I was actually with them, able to get a hands-on understanding of, you know, if I go down this route, that's what I'd be doing. And it was definitely something I enjoyed.
This dual enrollment program does help me put the foot in the door, holding it wide open so that I can have many experiences and options. This will help me, you know, go through that field.
Getting into the apprenticeship would be a dream come true. You're not just going there on your own dime. You're going there, and you're getting paid, and you're getting paid very well. Straight out of my senior year of high school, this is the ultimate career starter. There is no better way.
So, just as a side note, one of the students from this video, Ryan Buzzi, he's now a full apprentice with STEEL. So, the success of this program has led to the start of a similar model with a manufacturing company called IMS Gear. We currently have three students onsite, starting an internship program in that field. In addition to these programs, we have entered into a regional partnership with TCC and neighboring school divisions to work with Newport New Shipbuilding, Oceaniering, Lyons, and a few other companies on similar programs for welders. Our students will have the opportunity to earn higher-level certifications, as well as onsite experience in locally-relevant and in-demand profession. Though there's a variety of specialized pathways, as you've seen, from dental assisting to internships with manufacturing companies, the opportunities for all students through our general curriculum, centers, academies, regional partnerships, and higher academic programs are plentiful. I would like to leave you with a portion of a video produced by the Virginia Department of Education, highlighting a VBCPS grad and a former ATC student, Mary Ammon.
My name is Mary Ammon, and I work at ABS Technology as a client support engineer. For ABS, I'm a client support engineer. I take trouble tickets as they come in, specifically more related towards security. So, if people need help with their firewalls, letting stuff in, or maybe configuring it to be a little bit better for their network, I prefer to do security. And then I also do some route switch troubleshooting tickets. For the CTE course, I did the Cisco Network Engineering class. That was a two-year program, two and a half hours every day for two years. The course was brand-new to me, pretty much everything in it. I knew what a computer was, but that was the extent. I didn't know how anything did anything. With my two years at the CTE program for Cisco Network Engineering, I learned route switch, half one year, half the other year. I got my Cisco Certified Network Associate certification for Cisco Gear, and I use the knowledge that I got from that class and with that certification every day on the job. I did Skills USA, and I was part of the National Technical Honor Society with the Advanced Technology Center. I would say Skills USA was definitely a highlight of my time at ATC, because it was kind of like a competition, Cisco-specific competition. I got to compete against peers. I was seventeen, got to go to Kansas City, my first time away from home, and I got to test my skills. That opportunity helped me develop my skills further, because I do every single one of those things, minus the cabling, every day. I wanted to go to college, I did go to college, but the idea of if that didn't work out, I'd have something to fall back on right away.
So, this is just one of the many videos in the CTE career video series that was produced by the VDOE. If you'd like to see the entire video or the series posted around the career clusters, they are all posted on the VDOE's website. I'll turn it back over to Dr. Cashwell. Hopefully, you could see throughout the presentation that those themes I mentioned at the beginning of the presentation around awareness, exploration, and then eventually readiness for students really does play itself out in the multiple pathways we offer our students, starting from the time they're in pre-kindergarten through the time they're in high school. On an opening slide, you saw a young man dressed in a doctor's outfit, and later you saw high school students actually working as dental assistants. You saw students in fourth grade all attending the symphony, and then students wanting to narrow their focus and actually serving as performers for the Beach Street Boogie Band. So, you can definitely see that when it comes to real-world pathways and preparing our students for the future, there's a very purposeful set of opportunities to allow them those experiences and really help launch them for their future. So, we are happy to take any questions that you may have at this time.
Ms. Felton?
Dr. Cashwell, thank you for that wonderful presentation. I, too, attended the navigational journey. The event, it was really well-attended, really enjoyed it as well. Lanstown High School was there, Bayside Middle was there, Bayside Sixth Grade was there as well, and PA. And the principal pulled these students together to bring them to this event. I was myself surprised at all the events, all the schools, all the different programs were inside individual schools. And believe it or not, that's where I got a lot of my PBIS information from that very event. But my question to you is, will that continue, and what enhancement will you do? Because students were really excited about it to know what was going on as well.
We were very excited about it. It was our first time. You may recall, we moved away from just highlighting our academies through academy nights to recognizing that, and as you could see in this presentation, the pathways and opportunities go well beyond there. Opportunities right in every home high school, you know, beyond what we even offer with our academies. So, really trying to open folks' eyes to that, and families beyond the time that they're exiting middle school, going into high school. So, this time, we opened it up to families of all ages, of students of all ages, so that they could see what our connections were beginning in the early years. So, we will continue to do that. Many of our schools found it useful to bus families in if they thought that it was going to be an issue with transportation. We'll continue to help support that where it's needed. And I think we're hoping that we will have the same amount of information available, but that will get even more families there for our younger students. So, right now, you know, families were looking for that, knowing that this is an annual event, at least to look at high school academies. So, we got a lot of that age group there, and we got some of our younger students and families there, but want to continue to grow that. So, we'll certainly begin to market it for all of our families, so that they have a great awareness of all of the opportunities available.
Mrs. Manning?
I'm very excited about the internship opportunities. That's fantastic. How many students would you say, right now, in high school are participating in an internship opportunity?
I don't have that number. I can get it, because we do track that now. So, certainly where you see heavy numbers, a lot, all of our ATC programs, most of our TCE programs, all involve that. But now, more and more at our high schools, you'll see that has been a push. A lot of programs we're trying out for the first time. For example, there's a physical personal training and fitness program that we started at Kellum this year, and then those students are able to intern at local fitness clubs and health centers, and that's something we'll continue to grow. So, I don't have a number for you right now, but definitely those numbers are growing very quickly.
Do we have a goal set for each school? Is this kind of a site-based thing, or are we helping the schools as far as administration?
We are helping them come up with those opportunities. And, you know, it's something that we saw as a big push, not only locally here in Virginia Beach, knowing that that really meets our goal of our strategic plan around multiple pathways, but the VDOE has a big push. We'll see now this push towards their profile of a graduate attributes, and one of their graduation requirements really centering around this idea that every student has the opportunity to participate in some sort of internship or internship-like experience. So, the push would be to create opportunities for every student to have something like that.
Great. Thank you. Mrs. Fry?
I do like the way you presented it in the context of broadening the academy philosophy, because the reality is, I'm going on a limb here, but I would say at most twenty percent of our students are academy students. So, I mean, and that's not factoring in the schools where there are not academies. So, my point being that it's just wonderful to have that many more opportunities for the other eighty percent.
Ms. McLeod?
I'm not for sure if this question, I'm confident you can answer it, but I might be more directed towards counseling. So, this is wonderful, and the programs and plates, you do that. And obviously, by having this night, there will be people getting kids to come to explore and find out and be aware. But then what's next? Because I have a greater concern about the follow-up to the students and the guidance department and what have you.
That's an excellent question. And really, the foundational piece that carries throughout all of these opportunities is our academic and career plan, or we often call it the ACP. So, in prior years, while that process was very thorough, getting kids to take interest inventories at certain points in their career, log those, make course choices based on that, and began planning for not only middle and high school, but then eventually graduation, we've taken that to the next level and developed a number of resources on our ACP site to really get families involved with beginning to think through some of these opportunities. We actually have pathway documents, which we highlighted at our Navigating the Journey Night, but are all found on that site. And families can take a look early on and see, you know, if I'm interested in any number of career clusters, what might that look like for a four-year college track? What might that look like for something to go right into the workforce? What would the courses be that are necessary? What are regionally-relevant work areas? So, hospitality and tourism, cyber areas that are hot, that we've worked with our local economic development folks on. We've tagged those with pins, so that they can see if a family's looking, or a student's thinking, oh, this might be something where I might be able to find a job right away in the area that might help with their interests. But absolutely, more resources that students and families can grab on their own, and then a process for being able to collect that information over time. We're able to do now through Schoology, the academic and career planning process will sort of be a portfolio that carries with students throughout their whole time with us. So, that's wonderful, it allows easier access. And then also, being able to, of course, increase the number of counselors in our secondary schools will be a big help in providing that one-on-one assistance when students need it. So, while we can't rely on those one-on-one interactions, we want to make sure that when they occur, they're very meaningful, and then that resources that wrap around are easy to find.
I mean, the meaningful part is, what's, you know, they have them for twenty minutes, and what can you really do in twenty minutes? And every single aspect of the folks I work with right now, at every single meeting we have, they do not have enough workforce. They do not have enough qualified people to actually enter and be a productive workforce member. I mean, from temp agencies to, I mean, every single part of it.
Anyone else? Ms. Malnick?
Can that be addressed, Dr. Spence?
Can that be addressed, Dr. Spence, through the, help me, Mr. Keever? Well, I wasn't thinking to, but I was thinking, when we pull our kids during the day for their groups.
Advisories?
Oh, advisory group, yeah.
Yeah, actually, the ACP process is being incorporated into advisories.
Yeah, so there are a number of opportunities. Of course, they'll still exist with the school counselor, but the advisory block will allow schools to focus on issues. They may want to focus in on as a school that are specific to them, but then all of the advisors will have a mental health component as well as an academic career planning component that will take them through some of those resources as well. So hopefully, the access and the follow-through, follow-through will be a little stronger based on some of those systematic opportunities like advisory.
Anyone else?
Yes.
Ms. Felton?
That's because, Dr. Cashwell, you mentioned that the Events Entrepreneurship and Innovative Program, they're in all schools.
That's a course at all high schools.
But I look at that we also have the Entrepreneurship Business Academy.
Correct.
And the Business Academy has the career-ready component, the internship component, and the four-year component. So are these two collaborating? Are they operating on their own? Because I'm concerned too, are the students getting this, all this information as well? Because it's a lot coming at them if it's in all school. So are we separating them and letting them know what they're getting?
Yes. So the course that's offered at every high school has a lot of the strands that are offered more in-depth at the Entrepreneur and Business Academy. So a student entering the academy would specialize in that programmatically for the entire time they're in high school, where this would be someone who is interested in business and entrepreneurship and studying it at the advanced level, but may not want to be an academy student, but still want to have that experience. And so many of the strands mirror the strands that are at the academy. They're just not covered over the length of time. And as in, they still get the opportunity to pitch ideas and do those same sorts of things with the startups and that sort of thing.
Being aware that the academy is limited to how many students is allowed in that program?
It would be a norm, what would be filled in a normal course class. So they'd have the opportunity to take it a number of times throughout their experience. But yeah, it's limited to normal course size. Thank you.
Mr. Edwards?
The marketing staffs, business staffs at the individual high schools.
Yes.
In years gone by, used to, part of their duties involve going out and identifying internships. And I understand, a few years back, that wasn't, that function was not staffed as heavily. Where are we on, on that?
One of the coordinators at the Advanced Technology Center, who oversees that business and marketing piece, helps with the professional development and training and coordination for the individual courses and classes across the city, and helps do some of that centrally to take a little bit of that load off the individuals. But, you know, particular programs at each high school may have a unique need, or their location may lend itself very easily to an internship at something that's very local or nearby. So to that extent, that's still happening, where they may reach out and establish some of those opportunities on their own. And then we do a lot of that centrally as well.
Thank you. Dr. Cashwell?
Thank you.
Next, we're ready for the Communications and Social Media update.
Yes. And so, by way of introduction, you may want to take advantage of this because this will also be Eileen Cox's final workshop with us. And so I know congratulations are in order to, to Eileen for her move to Williamsburg, James City County, and a new role there. So congratulations.
Thank you. I do not have as many years here as Amy does, but they have all been just as memorable. So fortunately, I will still get to keep up with all of it through your Communications and Social Media updates. So, good afternoon. I'm Eileen Cox. For the next three days, the Chief Media and Communications Officer for Virginia Beach City Public Schools, and I'm joined by Lauren Alasko, the Director of Communications, and Bradley Wyndham, one of the Division's two webmasters, to provide you all with an update on our existing communication platforms, and also some new initiatives, and to give you a sneak peek of the soon-to-be-unveiled, reimagined, redesigned VBschools.com. So before we get to the new website, though, we need to look at where we've been and how far we've come. And Lauren's going to start us there.
So it's hard to believe, but it was roughly five years ago that I was again standing here, sharing with you the progress that we had made on some new communications efforts, some things that we were trying out, really groundbreaking things, known as a Facebook page and an Instagram account. Looking back at our Instagram account, it was clear that the only people following along were our office staff members. But we've grown since then, right? So now, if you look, our social media efforts have really become a part of our everyday communications. If we take a quick look at how we're performing, you'll see that our Twitter page has more than 24,000 followers. Our Instagram brings in another 2,000 followers, and our Facebook page has more than 18,700 followers. Social media has been a consistent communications channel for us, where we not only get to communicate quickly, but we get to engage with our community directly. So what does that look like? One example of this engagement is, comes in just two weeks ago, with our social media channels hit one of its busiest times with our graduation coverage. The BBCPS hashtag was used throughout all thirteen graduation ceremonies. And through that work, we reached close to half a million people with all of our photos, videos, and posts from graduation. And that ranked in more than 1.7 million impressions, or the total amount of times that our content was displayed in people's news feeds. So as part of the effort to continue to share our great news, we also developed a series of blogs where we can do that great storytelling. So we have our staff blog, which I think most are familiar with, Kaleidoscope, which just this past year had 32,268 unique visitors. That unique visitors figure means that about 32,000 different people visited the site. That was just not one person who kept refreshing the site 32,000 times. Kaleidoscope's engagement is particularly noteworthy, because we have roughly 10,000 employees. So with 32,000 visitors, what we're seeing is people are connecting with that content, and they're sharing it beyond just our division's buildings, which is exciting for us. We also have The Core, which is more of a community blog, places where students, families, partners, and anyone interested can pop by and see some of the amazing work going on in the division, as well as get news and information about our schools. Looking at our analytics that we pulled just yesterday, The Core had 71,485 unique visitors this school year. Again, that's more than 71,000 people who visited the site and either learned a new story, or had some new information about our division. And finally, we have our We Are VB Schools blog, which if you have not visited, let me encourage you to stop by for a few moments. Here, you get to meet the people who make up this division: students, staff members, volunteers. You get just a snapshot of the men and women and boys and girls who make Virginia Beach City Public Schools the place that it is. These vignettes are shared on our Facebook page every night at 8:00 PM, and they are, without a doubt, some of the highest-viewed and most-shared pieces of content that we have. Each post usually brings in a unique reach that's somewhere in the thousands. So I've shared with you just a few of the mediums and outlets where we proactively share information and news. However, we're always, we're always looking for new ways that we're able to connect our content with our community. In January of last year, we developed our A Slice of BBCPS Digital Newsletter to have another avenue to get these stories and these highlights and division news in front of our stakeholders. This year, we began sending Slices to all of our parents and staff members through our Alert Now system, which is roughly 88,000 contacts each week. So as we move forward with the new Alert Now provider this year, beginning July 1, we're actually going to be able to pull analytic data on these emails, which is exciting, because then we get to see open rates, click-through rates, what stories are most read. And that's only going to help us as we start building out more communications efforts in the future. So while we were looking at all the ways that we could share our content and some of the best practices, we were also looking at some of our communication foundations, our website and our mobile presence. And we had to ask some, some tough questions, like, quite frankly, we have a lot of great information, we have a lot of great resources, but are things like the way that our late, our website is designed and laid out, does it make it easier for people to find that information, or make it a little bit more difficult? Was it possible for us to create an app that could house all of the digital resources and tools that we had, so that families would have an easier time to have a one-stop-shop for everything they would need for the school division?
So the answer to those is yes. And at the same time that we were asking those questions, we were looking to fill a vacancy within our office due to the retirement of a staff member. And so we really looked at, what did we need from that person, and what could they bring to enhance our communications team? And we realized that digital content and our website were an opportunity for us. So we were fortunate, Erica Yelland joined our team. She has significant experience both through the military and through private sector, working with digital resources and marketing. And so she joined the division. She actually was going to be here this evening, but had a family emergency and couldn't be here with you. So I feel a little bit like I'm stealing her thunder unveiling the website that she worked so diligently on. So when you see her next week, please make sure you give her, give her congratulations on the look. Erica and the webmasters, H.L. and Bradley, really looked at our website to see, how user-friendly was it? What were folks coming to see? And were we getting the information as quickly and efficiently as possible? And so, as you can see in our current website, lots of dropdown menus, lots of buttons, but not necessarily, if you don't know what the Great Dreams Need Great Teachers campaign is, do you know what you're, you're looking for, or you're going to get when you click that? So we wanted to make sure that we provided a streamlined page and experience for the visitors that come to VBschools.com. And so how did we do that? Well, it began with a lot of research. H.L. and Bradley and Erica reviewed all sorts of data and pages, 3,200 pages, and 65,000 files, including photos and videos and PDFs, to see what pages were visitors looking at, and what items were they searching for when they came to our page, used our search box. And so I don't think you're going to be surprised by the answers to those questions, what were they searching for, and what were they looking at. Things that you might expect: calendars, meals, transportation, employment opportunities, the parent portal. So it was a lot of work. It was very hard work, but it was worth it because it allowed us to really hone in on those items and make sure that they were easy to find for our viewers, or for our visitors. It also helped us, we were moving the website into full compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act, because what it also revealed is that there were some pages that had been created years and years and years ago that hadn't been visited. And so was that information housed somewhere else? Were we able to eliminate some of the clutter on our site? And we found that there were. So we were able to, to remove those as well. So we wanted to make sure, as we were looking at not just what we were providing to folks, but how did that look, and what was their experience? And did it align with our other digital resources and channels and marketing? Was it branded the same way? Or did it look like it was a parallel but not aligned instrument? So, da-da-da-da, are you ready?
Ready.
All right. Here we go. To be launched on Monday, July 2, is the new and improved VBschools.com. You'll see that it's very crisp, it's very clean, it's very intuitive once you're on the site. So we're not going to walk you through the lifestyle right now. We're going to make you do that on Tuesday, but we do want to show you just some of the highlights. So at the very top of the page, you'll see the division logo and our core values. We include those in all of our communications, and we want that to have the same look. We have our top menus for some of our most visited areas, as far as the military page, specific pages that people might see. We kept the slideshow there. We know that that's a great place to highlight our students and our staff and events. We can also make graphics that post announcements of upcoming events. And then right below the slideshow, you'll see those hot buttons. Those are the things that we talked about as the most visited and searched items: the transportation, the calendar, the parent portal, school hours, and employment. But once you leave this front page, you still need to have that clean, efficient experience. So if you were to click on enrollment, for example, here you'll notice that the page is, again, very user-friendly, very intuitive, and it, you can easily find what is it that you need to bring with you if you're registering your child for school. It's right there, easy to find. You don't have to keep searching. So at the same time we were looking at the division page at VBschools.com, we thought, you know, the same was, oh, I'm sorry, I skipped ahead. So if we go back to the homepage, below the hot buttons there, you'll find a recent news section that has our press releases. It has stories from The Core and the Kaleidoscope, especially those most visited stories that Lauren was talking about. And then in the Connect With Us section, it has some of our ongoing campaigns: the Great Dreams Need Great Teachers, the We Are VB Schools, our Be Social, Be Smart, Be Safe Digital Responsibility Campaign. And then another area that we receive a lot of interest in is volunteer opportunities and making that readily available for folks. So now, as we were looking at the division website, we also wanted to make sure that visitors had that same experience when they visited individual school webpages. So, da-da-da-da, this is an example of a school page, Fairfield Elementary. You'll notice, again, that it has the, the large slideshow there that will include, you know, indicators from the building, their mascot, their building itself, but also a place where they can feature students, staff photos, and announcements. It has the same latest news section, and the quick links for the most searched things at an elementary school level, or at a middle school, or at a high school level. And also really important on this page is the map. We have so many people coming in and out of the division, especially military families. We want to make it as easy as possible for them to find out, is this a school in my neighborhood? Where am I going when I'm visiting a school? So we added that feature. And it, again, includes a calendar of events that will feature not only the school's individual events, but all of the division events will be pushed out to the schools as well. So as we moved on, Lauren mentioned the mobile app and the idea that we wanted to have a place to house some of the existing apps that we're using, that were kind of in, out individually from departments or schools, and then also some of the important messages, messages and communications that we send out to families routinely. So we field-tested an app with ten schools this year. It was very, very positive, the feedback that we received. In fact, we had a parent contact our office whose child attended a school that was not a field-test school, but came across the mobile app, and wanted to know, when were they going to have the opportunity to use the mobile app? So we knew the time was right, as we're redesigning and relaunching the website, to also launch a more comprehensive mobile app division-wide. So you'll notice that many of the items from the website's homepage are also included in the mobile app: the calendar, the news, the transportation. But here's a really important feature. See there in the middle at the top there, notifications. This would be any notification that goes out as an Alert Now message will also now be pushed to the mobile app. And we're able to do that because we're using the same provider for our app, and our Alert Now, and our website. So anytime someone gets a text or a phone call, you know, we won't receive all those phone calls saying, I just missed a call from you. What does it say? It will be right there for you. So if we go to the next part of the app, you'll see, again, some of the most commonly-used apps at high school and middle school, the sports calendars, some of the classroom apps that are being used. Schoology is on there. But I want to draw your particular attention up to the top there for the Reported app. And this app will allow students and families and members of the public to report if they see a social media threat, or a maintenance issue, or anything that they want to make us aware of. It's called P3, which stands for Police, or Public, Police, and Private Sector. And this is an app that's currently being used by crime solvers. So we partnered with Crime Solvers, and thank you to Mr. Edwards as a board member with Crime Solvers. He was really instrumental in bringing us together to collaborate on that. And so we're able to nest in an app that's already familiar to our community, and also tweak it a little bit on our site so that it's user-friendly. So when you log in, when you click on the Reported feature, you'll see this box to your left where you can include your name, the who, what, and when of your report. You can remain anonymous, or you can include your contact information for the police. You also have the opportunity to upload or attach a photo or a screen grab of something that you might see online. So for example, if you're running at one of the tracks of the school and you see an issue, you can take a quick picture and upload it right there. Because it is the Crime Solvers app, there are numerous types of crimes, issues, or incidents that can be reported. But we numbered those that are most relevant to our schools so that they will appear at the top of the list when you access it through our app. But there are, again, all sorts of things that you can report through the Crime Solvers app. We're using Report It rather than P3 because we think that's more understandable, perhaps to some of our younger students who might be looking to report something with either themselves or by their, with their families. So this is a really great feature, and I think that, again, it shows that collaboration that we have with our police department and with the city agencies, that through Mr. Edwards, we were able to come together and rather than reinvent the wheel, make use of something that is already familiar to our community.
Great. Well, this has been a huge effort, as you can imagine. And I want to thank our amazing team in the Communications Office, who, in my humble and completely biased opinion, do some of the best writing, planning, photograph- who, in my humble and completely biased opinion, uh, do some of the best writing, planning, photographing, designing, all of it, and school communications work really in the country. Um, we have incredibly talented people working for us, including Erica, uh, H.L., Bradley, uh, our other coordinators, Heather Allen and Rosemary Gladden. Um, for this work, we really had to work very closely with technology, as you can imagine. So, uh, from our mission's office, we just want to say thank you, especially to Chris Bruno, and John Clary, Joan Burt, and Jonathan Edwards, for all of their work, um, who are great valued partners as we were doing this pretty large transition. Um, and finally, I also want to point out that thanks to an RFP process from earlier in the year, and the work of our purchasing office, we were able to negotiate a bundle pricing package. So, our new rapid notification system, new website host provider, and new app will all be the same cost at what just our previous Alert Now system used to cost. So, this means there are no budget increases for these new platforms, so a big thank you to them. A big thank you to Clary Shop, especially Kevin Beardsley and Carl Smith for, um, for that as well. So, we have thrown a great deal at you, and this time we're happy to take it back.
Mr. Edwards?
When can we download the app?
Yeah, so. I know, just wondering that.
I have a question. Um, the app, the website will launch on Monday, July second. The app will be available for download just in time for back to school in August, and will send out a notification to all of our families that will be available through both, uh, Apple and Google Play. Um, and we will push that out through our Alert Now system, to make sure that everybody has that, students and, or families and staff alike.
Nice.
Cool.
Thank you. Ms. McLeod?
I just want to compliment you, um, you, this is way, way better, but you had already done a really good job. I do everything by my phone, and you had already made it, the website, so much better on the phone, so I'm all looking forward to designing a new site. Good job.
And H.L. and Bradley designed that mobile site, that was all them, we did that.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all for the, from.
Thank you. So, our next item is to forecast, uh, agenda items for the first quarter of fiscal year nineteen.
Yeah, that's correct. So, those are coming around, and Diane's going to put them up. So, this is the first quarter forecast for the next school year. Couple of. You do? Okay, well, it's coming around.
Here you go.
Apologies. Thank you. Couple of things to point out. You see, uh, first and foremost, I'll just mention on the fourteenth and twenty-eight, you see blank lines. Uh, so, part of that was intentional, um, typically at the July retreat, we have some conversation about future workshop topics that you have interest in, and so, we wanted to leave a little bit of space, uh, in the case that you, um, had some things that were more pressing than second-quarter items, and so, we did that intentionally. Um, we have captured some other conversations that we've had with you. And so, just a quick review of some of the workshop topics. We'll be talking, again, about, uh, professional learning, and what the focus areas for the next school year are. Uh, there'll be an overview of what's happening at the federal level with ESSA, and how that's going to play out at the state level. You'll get, as you always do, a review of standard of, uh, SOL student performance, uh, and we'll be bringing to you results and administrative recommendations based on the employee input process. And then, at the end of the quarter, um, an overview of the base alternative behavioral program. That's that classroom that we've created to try to begin piloting a, a way to deal with, um, extremely disruptive elementary school students. Um, and so, we'll bring you, uh, we, we pushed that towards the end of the quarter, because we're launching a second phase of that, um, pilot, and we wanted to have a little bit of time to be able to tell you how that, how that's going. And then we'll give you a CIP construction projects update, which is about the time of year we usually do that, um, in the quarter. So, those, uh, those are the main, uh, workshop items, information schedule, um, is fairly, fairly typical, uh, along with the action and consent. So, with that said, any questions, uh, or things that you are missing, you'd like to see on? And again, a reminder at the retreat, we will leave a little time at the end for, if you've got specific things you want to see included, so you don't have to think of them tonight.
Anyone have anything? Wow. Okay.
Could leave those blank lines. Yeah.
Okay, well, um... I guess that's it. So, we can, if, we might have time to go into closed, what do you think?
That's up to you guys, yeah, I mean, I'll spill and step out, I don't stay in there. I think we probably can.
I think we can, I think we have time.
You can continue it till later.
If we need to continue, we will, let's do it.
I'm sure I move that, whereas the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach has convened the, oh, that's not my correct one. Oh, it's really short at the top. I move that the School Board adopt a motion to recess and close meeting pursuant to exemptions from open meetings allowed by Section two dot two thirty-seven eleven, Part A, Paragraph one, for Virginia, nineteen fifty, as amended for A personnel matters, discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, alignment, promotion, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees pursuant to Section two dot two thirty-seven eleven A one, namely to discuss performance evaluation of a specific administrator.
It's been moved and seconded. Uh, all those in favor, going into closed, raise your hand, please. All those opposed?